Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the 4th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. And I do appreciate all of you coming out to attend the meeting this evening. I would ask you all to please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you're welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment. I And if I could ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko. Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
So as a note, we have three people present and we have two council members that will be joining us virtually, so you'll hear from them but not see them here at the dais today. Okay? With that, our first order of business this evening would be a presentation and the presentation of Ralph Carter Park, which is an update. So please take it away.
Okay. Well, good evening, Marion City Council. James Hurst, the Director of Parks and Recreation. At the request of Mayor and City Council, just bringing tonight's presentation is about Ralph Carter and a quick update on the park. So first of all, we'll go through a little bit of background. First, we're going to talk about the background of our Sport Alliance. We're going to talk about the importance of youth sport, what park improvements we are doing in the timeline, our current field inventory, a quick overview of our permit process for each of the fields, and then a new schedule that we are working on for that park as well. So Sport Alliance was created in 2012. It was created to provide the residence of Palm Coast's youth sport opportunities. We do still have the Alliance till this day. To be part of the Alliance, they would need, each Alliance member needs to fill out an application and provide Parks and Recreation with the necessary documentation, insurance, things like that. And then we do hold four meetings each year. These are quarterly and each of our Sport Alliance members are required to attend three out of the four. It's just kind of a little bit of our bylaws there. Really wanted to touch on the importance of youth sport in the community. This snapshot here is from our National Recreation and Parks Association research publication, Park Pulse, kind of goes through some survey questions they did to all U.S. adults. But then also you can see and hear the little speech bubbles that, you know, it does increase physical activity for our youth. It does build the friendship between our youth and then obviously it develops skills like teamwork and respect. So it's really just wanted to start with the importance of youth sport in any community, not just ours.
And don't forget, most importantly, it keeps the parents off the streets, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
So park improvements actually just started yesterday. June 3rd was the first day we closed down the fields to start on some of the improvements to the multipurpose fields. But first, before we did that, we had some longer light bulbs fixed. In the next section, I'll show you which poles they got moved to and what poles got changed. So they went from seven-inch to 14-inch bowl visors. The Musco Lighting, who did all the work, redirected some of the lights, kind of to focus more onto the field, but also try and keep in mind the safety aspect of people on the field as well. We are starting, as I said, June 3rd, we are starting our regrading. That is done internally by our Public Works Department, which is awesome. We are looking to install some new sod. And then just a quick briefly on the timeline, February, March is when we got the lights and the bulbs and the visors done. And then our field improvements started yesterday and then it should be going through till November, probably late November, early December, obviously depending on weather. So just real quick, I don't know if my mouse can get up here, but Musk, as I said, Musco did some redirection each of the lights. Sorry. They also hit three poles that they thought needed to be readjusted, realigned, and put the visors on. So Pole 7, Pole 6, and Pole 5 were those ones selected. Unfortunately, Pole 5 couldn't get done. It does have an Osprey nest on the top of it and as we were about to start it, it became active. So our plan is probably next maybe week or two, probably fly up another drone up there and just kind of check and make sure there aren't any chicks or eggs or anything in there. And if there isn't, we may look to remove it. But kind of the green, just real briefly, the green kind of shows you which way each of the lights are pointing. And so most of these were added, the visors were added and redirected closer to the field and shined more onto the field. Just a real quick glance at our sport field inventory. So we have 16 fields at Indian Trails Sport Complex, two multipurpose fields at Ralph Carter. We have five fields at James F. Holland Memorial Park, two multipurpose fields at Bel Air, and then just one at Seminole Woods. So our only lit fields are pretty much the ones at the Indian Trails Trail Sport Complex and our, and then there's the two at Ralph Carter Park. So all up we have, out of 26 fields, we have 11 that are lit. Real quick on our permit process. So each year, each of our leagues submit a application to our Field Maintenance Supervisor. The dates are on the website and they are usually between, before winter and spring, summer, and the fall seasons. Once submitted, our Field Maintenance Supervisor, he assesses each request and then he also schedules a meeting with his maintenance team as well, just to go over all the requirements and everything we need to get done. But also when he assesses each of our requests, we do look at what each group got the previous season, what their field usage numbers were, and then also their total registration numbers. Is that something that we require from each organization to provide to us? And then we'll see some numbers in a couple of slides. And then once the schedule has been determined and they move their magic and get everything working correctly and everything scheduled, we send out an email with all the attached Quick glance at our field capacity and park usage. As you can see, Indian Trails Sport Complex continues to be the most used field. And then behind those are Ralph Carter Park and then our unlit fields, which include Bel Air, Seminole Woods, and Holland Park. Each Indian Trails, we're looking around 2,000 permits in fiscal year 2022, '23. And then Ralph Carter Park is kind of reaching the limit at less than 500. And then the next one next to that, next graph next to that is the lighted versus non-lighted field permits. And as you can see, lighted fields are a necessity and is required.
James, do these graphs, do these indicate basically maximum allocation of capacity for the entire year when we look at those charts?
Yeah, pretty much. Yes, you're correct, yeah. And then just a quick glance at the sport participation numbers. So it's soccer. We have four organizations. We have Flagler Soccer, which is 135. We have Royal Palms Soccer, which is 75. Florida Elite is another soccer, youth soccer tournament. Youth Soccer is 363. We also have Inter United, which is at 565. Palm Coast Little League has 458 and then Mad Dogs Flag Football has around 400. All these are growing. So these are just numbers, I think, from last fiscal year. Flagler Soccer and Royal Palms are actually adult leagues. So these are, in the next slide, you'll see our schedule, but we talk about how we move some of our organizations around. We moved these Flagler Soccer and Royal Palms because they were going to 10 o'clock at night. That's just due to adults get off work, get home, get ready to go, and then they usually start their games around 8 o'clock and go to 10. So we moved these guys to Indian Trails Sport Complex to help alleviate the light schedule over there at Ralph Carter, because they were at Ralph Carter first and we moved them. So then just really quick, our staff kind of worked hard on a new schedule for the fields. So we are making sure that all the field lights are off at 9:00 PM. The basketball and skate park lights, they will be off at 10:00 PM. And then with the help of the Sheriff's Office, they will help us enforce any trespassing into the park after 10:00 PM. And with that being said, that is everything. Any questions from anyone or comments?
I would start just by asking the timeline for the rehabilitation of the Ralph Carter Park fields. Is that a pretty standard timeline?
Yeah, with the turf that's coming in, the new sod, obviously grading takes a few weeks, maybe a month or so, then getting the new sod in, getting it, you know, germinate and set takes a few months as well.
Understood.
Hey, James, it's Ed Danko.
Go ahead, Ed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Councilman Danko.
I just, yeah, thank you. So you're pretty confident that this will be solving the problems we've had over there in the past and the complaints?
I think so. This, as I said, our new schedule will change that to 9:00 PM for the lights. Some of those are being redirected and we'll continue to monitor them as well.
Okay. Well, I'm glad this is good news and I'm hopeful that we are able to solve this problem. And I know for the folks over there that have had to deal with it, it's been difficult. So thank you, James, for this presentation tonight.
All right, no worries.
Are there any other, Councilman Pontieri, any questions?
Yeah, just a few. First, I want to thank Parks and Rec for everybody who's going to work on the fields and who has worked on the lights, Public Works. You guys have really mobilized pretty quickly considering everything that had to be considered and done. So thank you for the work on the lights and the continued work with myself and the rest of staff and our leagues with regards to getting the field done. Two major questions I have. One, do we have any plans to add lights to any of the other fields? Because it seems to me the sought-after fields are obviously sought after as much as they are because they're lighted. And then the second question I had, I know that we've been, we've been making efforts to improve the parking and traffic situations, particularly during game days at Ralph Carter. But is there any plan in the future to maybe work with our schools to better improve the parking situation, to keep our players safe, our parents safe, and to also help the neighborhoods surrounding Ralph Carter as far as the traffic goes?
Ms. Pontieri, I can answer those questions for you. We are working with the Flagler County Tourism Development Council. They have a current capital projects grant open for submission and we will actually be submitting for field lighting at the sports complex, not only for baseball, softball, but for also our multipurpose fields out there for a tourism enhancement. And then as far as parking, I had a great meeting this week with the Superintendent of Schools, Ms. LaShaka Moore, and we're actively working on how to mitigate our downtime of play with the groups while the field is under rehabilitation and working on parking improvements so that the school facility is always open to the City of Palm Coast for our sports groups' needs.
And so I just, I just would like to add too, as part of the project, we are looking to kind of, I wish I could have a picture up for everyone, sorry. So part of the project towards the end, we are looking to add some fencing that kind of goes around the current parking lot that to us is an easy, kind of, I guess, cheap safety measure to help, you know, so we don't have our kids running into the park following a ball, full sprint. So we're looking to put a fence there to help alleviate them just running straight into the parking lot. So that's something we're also looking into as well.
Okay. Thank you both for that. Lauren, really quickly, what is the timeline on the submission for the grants regarding the lighting?
Due this week.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Councilwoman Clufus?
Absolutely. I just think that this is a great moment also while we're here talking about Ralph Carter Park is to discuss expectation management and where we're going in the future, especially, first of all, congratulations on a tremendous season with the Mad Dogs football. You guys are a tremendous asset in our community, but we are at capacity for allowing new groups to our parks. And this council has been working on a plan to allow westward expansion with the pie-in-the-sky dream of having a big athletic facility on the west side of Palm Coast, which would have 16 turf fields, another four that are grass fields. But I think there's an opportunity, not necessarily tonight, but for management and staff to also have an education moment where we can, you know, enlighten everyone here on our future plans to be able to alleviate the capacity concerns that I'm pretty sure everyone in this room has, because we're running out of space and there's no doubt that the quality of your program will drive more and more individuals to participate in it. And I just want to make sure that the residents who are here tonight and hopefully listening online know that we have the foresight and we have a plan on how to be able to handle that capacity into the future.
Councilwoman Hyder?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the Department of Parks and Recreation and also staff for really putting time and effort into this matter. It was one of the first issues that I was confronted with last year when I came on City Council and I just want to say thank you so much. I really do hope that this will help to alleviate some of the issues that were occurring in the neighborhood as far as the lighting on the residents' homes. I'm hoping that the way that they've restructured the lighting, I'm hoping that it will help. And just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. I only have one more question. Seminole Woods Park, it has one field.
Correct, yes.
Is there space in that area to put additional fields at all? Maybe it would help to alleviate some of the pressure on the other parks.
Yeah, it could maybe do, if I'm thinking soccer, maybe do it two 7v7 fields, nothing big like 11v11 could probably, maybe one could fit there, but that's really kind of pushing it. There is a kind of like a drainage ditch to the west of the field too, so that kind of limits, and when it rains, it rains. And it kind of, that ditch does fill, but there is a ditch that's onto the west of that field as well that kind of limits a little bit of space.
Okay, I understand. And I'd like to congratulate all the teams that are out there and playing in the tournaments. Good luck.
Based on your comments, James, I think to be fully transparent, can you just mention, give us a little background? This is not a perfect solution. We're not sure there is a perfect solution. What you have presented and City Manager has presented are our city's attempts to find that forever solution, but it's a matter of growth and going forward. So can you just explain the conversation, the ongoing conversation with the immediate neighbors in the neighborhood?
Yeah, so we have been receiving some complaints on some light pollution coming from the park, shining into bedrooms and into houses, which, you know, is totally understandable. We also are looking at noise, a little bit of noise complaints too from our users of the park. So we try and mitigate those as much as we can, but it is, as we say, the organizations are growing, they are using a lot more space and it's, you know, we try our best to kind of alleviate and take them to different parks and everything, but ultimately, these are the only other two lit fields other than Indian Trails, which at nighttime during the week, you're looking at over 1,000, 2,000 kids out there with parents as well.
So to Councilman Clufus's point before, this is the city's mitigation efforts moving forward. In other words, we're continuing to work forward towards a time when all of our fields are in use and not of any bother or inconvenience to any of the surrounding community. That's obviously always our ultimate goal.
That's our goal, yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from City Council members at this time before I open it up for public comment?
I have none.
Then I would invite the public, anyone that would like to comment on this item at this time on the agenda, please come forward. Either way, Celia?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Celia Puglisi. I live in Palm Coast since 1991. This is a great presentation. They are doing a great job with everything that they have provided. I can't highlight anymore how happy I am of our Parks and Recreation. Now, my question more than for them is for the council. We have 1,100 residents that have used for 25 years the Bel Air and Swim Club pool that has been given to the schools and by ITT, on which when I arrived here in 91 and all the following years, it was use-free practically offered by ITT. So all these residents now have now paid a membership and they've been using it. And because of the school board, three members vote, they are denied the access, past June, the access to the pool membership. We, it's 1,100 residents. This is terrible because we have long summers and the one pool that is very well managed by Parks and Recreation, which is the former Frida Samba, serves well. It's intention, okay, it's well. But now this, all these residents, we have residents with special needs for that pool, elderly, people with minimal incomes. Don't you care about people with minimal incomes, that they have children, that they need to be busy during these very hot summers? These families go and use that pool with an affordable membership. No A1, no YMCA that you're trying to bring here without a pool will ever be able to replace what these residents are losing as far as concerned, the cost of the membership they pay, the affordability of this pool. We are a city on Florida with a hot summer. We need another pool at least. Let's reserve this pool. There should be an agreement between the city, the county, and the schools to allow these people to use their pool, please. We have people in special needs that use the pool. Don't you think about that would be a great addition to our Parks and Recreation? They will manage it with no losses, but we need this for these residents. That's the only thing I ask to complete our wonderful Parks and Recreation. We need to address less pickleball and more pool for the people because those pools have been used for 25 years and now they are denied. That's the only thing I can say.
Celia, thank you, but we're talking about Ralph Carter Park, so next speaker, please.
I have been a neighborhood watch leader in the R-section and spokesperson for
Marion, just a little bit closer so everybody can hear. Thank you.
Good? My name is Marion. I have been a neighborhood watch leader in the R-section and spokesperson for residents for 13 years. In 2009, Ralph Carter Park was designed and built to be a neighborhood park, not a sports complex. Our section residents enjoy having a neighborhood park close by. Recently, an extensive study of our city parks was conducted by the firm Dun &amp; Barry. This firm classified Ralph Carter Park, because of its size and proximity to homes, to be a neighborhood park, not a sports complex. During sporting event, practice games every weekday evening and Saturdays, there are hundreds and at times thousands of people dangerously stuffed inside Ralph Carter Park. On many occasions, deputies have been present issuing permits and warnings, excuse me, tickets and warnings. The noise pollution and light permeates our entire neighborhood, torturing our section residents. On Saturday mornings, our section residents are forced awake at 7:45 AM by car door slamming, yells, screams, et cetera. This continues for seven hours. The noise is so loud, it shakes the windows of our homes. Since September 2022, we residents spoke at council meetings, sent over 50 emails and pictures to city leaders depicting the high-intensity lighting onto our homes. On behalf of residents, I have also attended numerous meetings at City Hall. However, the light and noise pollution has continued up until last week and nothing has changed. Mr. Hurst states, "The city has tried to accommodate residents and adjusted the lights away from our neighborhood." It was agreed months ago that after the light adjustments were completed, there was to be a meeting with residents, James Hurst and Barbara Grossman of Code Enforcement at Ralph Carter Park in the dark evening hours with all field lights on to ensure there was no light spillage onto the R-section neighborhood. This meeting never occurred. There was a small gathering at the park in April. However, when we arrived at the field, all the lights were off. I contacted Barbara Grossman afterwards and she informed me she was never invited to the gathering. I respectfully request we schedule a meeting at Ralph Carter Parks, Ralph Carter Park next week in the dark evening hours with all the field lights on to ensure there is no light spillage onto the R-section neighborhood and into our homes. Residents repeatedly voice they feel we are living under a dictatorship as the light and noise pollution dictates what we can and cannot do in our homes. We are unable to enjoy sitting on our lanai's in the warm months. We are unable to open our windows and sliders in the cool months to let the fresh air in. We have been robbed of the simple pleasures of living in Palm Coast.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak on the Ralph Carter agenda item, please?
How is everybody? Jared Maxwell, President of Mad Dogs. I just want to thank Parks and Rec, James Hurst, for everything that himself and his department have done for Mad Dogs. We appreciate counsel. I think over the last year, since we were last here, you guys have done a great job by us and these kids and this community. You're going to have your 1% complainers in this world and I thank you all for not caving in to that 1%. At the end of the day, it's about these kids and these kids will always be put first. They're the defenseless in this situation. They have no power in this situation. It's advocates like us and our coaches that are in this room that fight for these kids on a daily basis. So thank you for everything you guys have done.
I thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
My name is Torine Wilson. I typically don't speak in public settings like this, however, I think this is an important topic and situation. Just want to give you a little bit of my acolyzum, Licensed Mental Health Counselor. I have experienced, several years of experience in juvenile justice prevention. And a couple of things I want to talk about today regarding our parks, three factors: mental health, risk factors, and protective factors. Mental health issues have been soaring since the pandemic and many scholars and research indicates that it's actually been soaring prior to that. What we do on the field helps benefit those students that may be struggling, that live in aberrant situations. What youth sports do is provide commitment, dedication, it builds self-esteem, self-confidence. Risk factors are characteristics, variables of hazards that if presented for a given individual, make it more likely these individuals, rather than someone selected from the general population, would develop a disorder and several juvenile justice researchers have linked risk factors to delinquency. In my capacity, when I served in the Juvenile Crime Prevention Office, oftentimes our kids needed an outlet. That's a protective factor, somewhere to escape. Like I said, following a pandemic, being secluded, being isolated, they need an outlet. And oftentimes, this outlet is youth sports, one particularly being Mad Dogs. It helps build that. Research indicates that one lasting connection or one adult connection deter all of these risk factors that our youth are seeing. So my question is today, studies report that single connection of meaningful relationships would deter maladaptive behaviors, mental health issues, and juvenile delinquency. And here's what I want to leave with you. If we don't invest in our youth today, we will continue to invest in the detriment of our society. The question is, what do you want to invest in?
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to City Council. Councilman Clufus, any final comment?
No, I really appreciate everyone showing up tonight. I understand how critical these types of programs are to our youth and our society and I commend everyone out there as far as parents taking the time and energy to contribute to a program that is bigger than any individual and the lives that you're impacting go beyond just the lives today. This will be, you know, relationships and lessons that are taught that will last a lifetime with these kids. So thank you guys for participating in our city and making a great program.
Councilman Pontieri? Councilwoman Ponteiri, any final comment on this item?
Just one second. What Councilman Clufus stated, thank you to the parents, the coaches, all the volunteers, and again to staff for just working with everybody involved to make sure that we're providing really good services in fields to our youth so that they can flourish in this way. So thank you, everyone.
Danko, any final comment?
I think Nick Clufus hit the nail on the head, so I'll just leave it with that.
Very good. James, what I would ask you, city manager, obviously the park will be closed and down, so there won't be any issue. So what I would ask is that when the park is reopened, you'll let us know. And I'd like kind of a regular report on how we're doing as we're still a work in progress. I think we all understand that. And until our other fields come online and we're able to schedule, you know, in additional places as well. So I know you're working on it. I appreciate it very, very much. So thank you.
Yeah, will do.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
With that, the next item on the agenda this evening is minutes. So we have minutes of the city council from the May 21, 2024 business meeting. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Danko and a second from Councilman Clufus. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
And similarly, I have minutes from a special workshop meeting on May the 28, 2024.
I'd like to make that motion approved.
I have a motion from Councilman Danko. May I have a second? Second from Councilman Clufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Let the room clear for a second. Counselor, I'll have you read the resolution in when you're given a minute. Okay, if you would, we're now at agenda letter G. No, yes, G number three. Counselor, if you would read that in for us, please.
Resolution 2024-XX approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Palm Coast and the Flagler County School District.
You're absolutely right. I apologize.
Audible, audible. The football people are--
Hold off on that and I'll have you read it back in again. So forgive me, let's open it up to general public participation. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Jeffrey Seib. I would like to make several comments about tree cover and green spaces. In regard to last week's meeting concerning the mature oak trees at Palm Coast Parkway and Shangri-La Apartments, those trees have been beat up with the road widening, growing right next to the roadway, and decaying limbs posing a potential hazard. At the time, we discussed it at the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee meeting and concluded the trees did pose a hazard and should be removed. However, I was speaking more of trees found in forest environments. Large development construction here involves forested areas being completely cleared of all vegetation, just a dirt patch left with piles ready to be burned. Prior to the destruction, those areas contained a mix of overstory hardwoods such as the oaks, sweet gum, the classic American elm, magnolia, and pines. When these trees reach their life expectancy in that forest, there are always junior trees of the same species growing right nearby, ready to take over. It's too bad our city planning department isn't more in line with residents' wishes for less destruction of trees and green spaces and work with developers for a happy medium design with large natural vegetative buffers or even conservation easements to protect many of those trees now lying in piles. Palm Coast is a member of the Tree City USA group. One of the qualifications for this membership and the signs is the city having a tree ordinance. Our ordinance is poorly enforced. Also, our deed restrictions require that new homes on the street have a minimum of three trees and corner lot homes, five trees. Traveling around Palm Coast, I see many home sites having one or two or no trees whatsoever. The city should enforce the tree ordinance and deed restriction requirements. Trees shading a home's roof lower the inside temperature by 10 degrees, thus reducing energy costs. Trees absorb tons of water and the photosynthetic process utilizes water and carbon dioxide to grow the tree or any green plant and return water vapor and fresh, pure air to the atmosphere. What's not to like about that? People like trees as part of our green and open spaces. We need to do a better job with this.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, all right. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Chip Houghton. Welcome to hurricane season. I'm here to follow up on a concern I expressed early last year to the council about unequal treatment to residents for city services and a need to resolve this so that the city can budget appropriately. I will refer frequently to roads and streets as the city has done, but the inequity is about yard waste pickup, not cleaning streets. There are a number of developments within the city where the streets are owned by homeowners' associations or community development districts. The city regularly utilizes these streets for many services like trash and yard waste collection, meter reading, fire hydrant maintenance, emergency services, et cetera. An issue is the collection of excess yard waste, leaves, limbs, plants, materials, et cetera. And I believe the city defines excess yard waste as yard debris from and on private residential property that exceeds two cubic yards. For the first time in the 18 years I've been here, in late '22, the city stated that in the event of disaster like a hurricane, tornado, the city would not pick up excess yard waste on private residential property where the roads were privately owned, but it would pick it up from residential property where the streets were public streets. Doesn't seem to matter that we all pay the same solid waste fee. In mid-2023, last year, the city announced that, one, if a neighborhood that owns its roads, and this is my understanding, and signs an access agreement with the city that would qualify the city for a FEMA reimbursement, and if the city hired an outside party to collect waste, then the city would pick up the excess yard waste in the event of a disaster. However, in the event of a disaster, if the city does not hire an outside party to collect the waste, the city will not collect the waste from the residents who live on private roads, but will collect it from the residents who live on public roads. We need to get this straightened out and get the budget straightened out also. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City manager, you'll follow up with that?
Yes, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
James D. You installed warning signs at the new hospital turn lane, which is a great start. We appreciate that. I think it's going to help people to get out of that lane more safely. But again, the object is to extend that lane to Bridge Haven because there are a lot of people turn there. So if you can get on that somehow and get them to do that. And the repaving of Route 100 is looking like it's coming along pretty good, but seems it was stalled and they're not getting on to putting in the right turn lanes. It's like, seems like forever now. So, you know, if they can, I don't know how far off they are with that. But again, I bring up the fact of that westbound turnoff lane that runs between the new storage facility and the Wawa. They have that 20-foot plot there. Please get them to pave that so we can make one continuous lane because you have the same problem. People go in there, they realize they can't get to Wawa and they got to pull back out in the traffic again. You approved the widening of South Old Kings since include Royal Palms. Great, thank you. I think there's a one-year estimate on that. And I think I just read that Old Kings North was approved for widening with a three-year estimate. So my question is, are those estimates to begin in that timeframe or to be completed in that timeframe? So, but we really need to speed up that process. Now, this is not a good example, but you know, Japan had an earthquake and they lost a bridge and a roadway and they rebuilt them in like a couple of days. Now, we can't expect to do that here. I know that's impossible, but we can beat the one-year, three-year timeline because we have a lot of people moving here. You know that. People are coming and there's no way to get them around. You know, this western expansion, we converted a lot from commercial to retail. It's converted back because we really need more retail, I mean, common need stuff like a gas station, convenience store, hopefully a Wawa over on the west side, and more like the mom and pop type stores that are coming up, you know, restaurants and common need stuff. Because they are building, they're building 6,000 homes out in Denell. No matter what the traffic that's going to bring across 100, across town. So if we had more family-friendly commercial retail stores up on Route 100, we can bring a lot of traffic out of there and people on the west side of Belterra would be able to go that way instead of having all crowd over towards Target or Walmart side. So really would like to look into that more and just stop building houses, please, because we just can't handle all the traffic right now for a while.
I appreciate your comment. Please, please. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I had a root canal today, so I have to talk really fast. My name's Lisa Genis. I live in the C-section off of Cimarron and 20 years ago, my husband and I moved here and in order to start his business, he was a contractor, we had to put up the big orange signs, we went to the meetings, we got the license insurance. And the problem we're having right now is we have an influx of short-term rentals. All these Airbnbs have completely surrounded us and I want to know why they don't have to notify the neighbors that, hey, we're opening a business right next to your house. Because right now, I have one directly behind me and right next to me. The noise from these businesses, day and night, seven days a week, there are people partying, 7:30 in the morning, dogs just barking incessantly. It doesn't stop. The parties, the screaming, the yelling, there's rap music, foul language, drinking, and most recently, drug use. The mounds of garbage that they leave behind are like, you know, liquor cases. So I know that's why they've come here. This past Thursday, we had to call the sheriff's department at 12:30 in the morning because I'm trying to sleep. We all work. Because they were so loud, we couldn't even sleep. 7:30 the next morning, I walked to my car to go to work. There's a cooked chicken wing that's been chucked from this house at my car. I was like, what the heck is this? I know it's not from a raccoon. It wasn't chewed. It was cooked and tossed. So we're all working people. We're entitled to have our peace and quiet. It's been completely ruined. The two owners of these two houses directly bordering my house live 1,000 miles away. We've contacted them, said, could you ask them to turn the lights off at nighttime, you know, cut the parties? But every few days, it starts all over again. It's a brand-new batch of people. We've gotten no sleep. Every night, it's the same. The whole house rentals, they're taking away homes from families. We thought the people that bought next to us was a young family and my husband spoke to them and told them about the schools, et cetera. They had no intentions of buying and staying here. They're renting it out. So we've worked here and lived here for 20 years. Our sons have grown here. They work in the community. We can't stay. I cannot stay and live in this. And I planned on retiring here. We searched for the neighborhood. We drove on my street at nighttime and weekends to make sure. It's a quiet street. It's not now. So when I go to sell my house, somebody's going to do the due diligence that we did, check out the schools, drive down the street at night. They're going to see eight cars. There was eight cars in the house next to me the other day, eight. We've contacted the fire department because there's more people in there than should be in a small home. It's a single-family home. There's a ton of people. We've contacted code enforcement. We've had to call the sheriff's office when it's, you know, the middle of the night stuff, but it goes on and on and we need something to help us.
Thank you for your comment and make sure you leave your, excuse me, please, let the next speaker come up. Leave your contact information so that we can follow up with the newly approved legislation from Tallahassee.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. This is a first for me. Council's not made, anyway, I won't waste enough time. Just to say, I'm on the same theme. My name is Roger Cressy.
Just introduce yourself for the record for us.
Okay. Roger Cressy, and I live in C-section. I live and own the property there. Just to say, on the same theme, really, we moved into the area, I've been there just over a year and we are also surrounded by Airbnbs. We're suffering from the same problem, the light and the noise pollution. We understand it's not the people who are actually coming to visit, it's the business owners who are not regulating it well enough. I think if there was some sort of restriction on numbers and more, if you like, stringent controls of sound and light from these, if you like, party houses, they are actually billed as party houses on their adverts on Airbnb, it would be so much easier. And I'm sure there is a huge burden of unnecessary effort being placed on the local police. We had to call the police twice on Sunday evening to come and ask them to stem down, you know, stem the noise and to calm down and give us some peace. I have my 89-year-old mother-in-law staying with us. She's not in great shape at the moment and there was just this booming noise that came through. And that's with the blinds, the windows, the doors closed and you're inside the house and you still are dancing to an unwilling bass sound. So, thank you.
I thank you for your comment and if you would leave your contact information, we can supply the same legislative information so we can be current with that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Marty Siegel and I'm going to talk about the same thing and echo some of the sentiment that we've heard already. The gentleman just said if we could regulate how many people are staying in one of these Airbnbs, I think that would probably alleviate most of the problem. The house next door to me, they, on the Airbnb site says that it sleeps 15 people and we've had on numerous occasions at least 15, if not more, when you include the little kids. Now, look, I raised my kids. My kids are all grown. I don't have that here. They're not with me. But last week, these people we hear from West Virginia enjoying their time with eight little kids and they put a slip and slide out on the side of their property. I was happy because they ran their hose for about four hours, so I hope that the people's water bill is through the roof. But at the same time, my wife and I were in the pool and these little kids were coming over to my enclosure, looking in and I had to like shoo them away. The parents are sitting up on the deck. They couldn't care less. They're drinking, doing whatever they want. It's just, it's taking away from our enjoyment of our retirement. My wife and I have been here since what we bought here in 2006. We moved down permanently in 2010. It's ridiculous that I have a business next door to me that they're making money and making my life miserable.
I thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Pat Keegan. I live on Collingdale Court. And just a little history. My parents, Florence and Warren Jund, in 1983, moved to Palm Coast. Of course, it was a different town than it is now. Never in their wildest dreams would they have thought that their house, which we live in now, would be near businesses. It's a residential area. I don't understand why the businesses are allowed, but they are. What I ask is that ordinances be enforced, and perhaps even a moratorium on these Airbnbs in Palm Coast be put in place. It's not right for us to have what these people have been describing. So I hope you take into consideration what we're going through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir?
Evening, Mayor Counsel. Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. Going through the campaign so far, this has been a very common complaint about Airbnbs in Palm Coast. And I live in the C-section as well, and we actually have one down the street from us. Luckily, it hasn't been a major issue for us specifically. With that being said, code enforcement does not enforce anything when it comes to that. And I've actually spoken to Barbara Grossman about this issue. And it gets a little murky because I understand the complexities with the state regulations as to what you can and can't do. But I've said since day one that we should be looking at them as businesses and making them register. And furthermore, you should be collaborating with the sheriff's office, with code enforcement, and identifying how much of a strain financially are these Airbnbs placing on our, on our deputies, on our resources that we have to expend as taxpayers. And whatever that number is, make a registry in total, and then divide that number by the amount of Airbnbs that that is. So if it's $1 million and there's 1,000 Airbnbs, everyone's paying $1,000 bucks to operate an Airbnb here because it's not fair for the residents to be carrying that burden for these businesses to operate. Furthermore, I've had numerous reports that some of these Airbnbs are basically operating under the homestead exemption, which is not allowed because it has to be your primary residence. So I know that that's a little bit tricky because, once again, state, city enforcement in the county gets involved. But there has to be a crackdown on the Airbnbs. And furthermore, there has to be some simple measures put into place. Because even if the families are nice that are showing up, there is seven or eight cars. There is 15 motorcycles. And I also caution people, these are valued tax dollars that we have to keep in, keep in mind as well, because these people come and they spend money in our community. But it is not fair to the residents that have invested there.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
As you know, I run the sheriff's boat on patrols of the canals. We see something, we turn it into code enforcement. We see a lot of stuff out there. I've invited several of you to go along with me from time to time, and it never happened. We had a case where Barbara asked me to testify in front of the board, where this individual was throwing tons of grass or blowing tons of grass into the canals. Prior to my case coming up, there was an elderly woman who was in the hospital that couldn't clean some junk up in front of her house. They threw a $1,500 fine at her. Is that the way we treat the elderly? A young fellow had started a business. He had a trailer, work trailer, parked in the back of his house on the porch, covered, not seen from the street, which is a criteria. If it's seen from the street, it's an issue. They hit him with an $8,000 fine. Crazy. These are volunteers, five on the board, sit right here. My case came up. Barbara went through it. Richie was there, testified. They sandbagged it. They didn't want to see the film of him throwing the grass in the canal. They didn't want to see the testimony of any part of it. They just killed it, which means either a hierarchy told them not to, or several of them on the board have him cutting their lawns. Hey, that's not right. I have a report here. We get a few more degrees in that canal, we're going to have a red tide. It's going to take 18 months to get rid of it. And you need to read this, not just shelf it. Because if that happens, it's going to kill all the fish. It's going to get on the seawalls, the pilings. It'll be there for a while because there are not enough tidal, and you know, I talked to you about that. And it's going to be a mess. A big mess. It could take 18 months to get rid of it. And you read this report to show you. It's like, this fellow that runs that particular lawn service is screaming harassment. There's no harassment there. We're stating the fact of what's going on. And he's getting screamed. He foul-mouthed everything. He's F you, F that, so forth and so on. And he doesn't want to take any consideration of what his activity is going to do. I've talked to other people over there cutting lawns. They understood. Now they're blowing the grass away from the canals. They're not blowing it in with their leaf blowers, and their, and their lawnmowers are turned around the other way. This guy picks up the flap on his lawnmower and lets it blow on the neighbors all over the place. And I have pictures of it. I had Mr. Danko out. He looked at it. He said, that's a lot of grass. And he went to Barbara. Barbara says, well, let's see what we can do. Because Barbara told me after the hearing she didn't believe how they handled it. Jason said, oh, they can't try it again. They tried it once. Does that mean a sheriff who gives out a speeding ticket or DUI can't give out another one? That's a ridiculous statement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Celia.
My name is Celia. I live in Palm Coast, 91. I fully understand the situation of these residents that have the problems with these short-term rentals. First of all, our city, representing all us, we spend our taxes, we should not ever refer on any given company because there are millions of short-term rentals. Many short-term rentals in Palm Coast are handled by local managers. They don't have nothing to do with the big corporation that was mentioned here. And we need to really find out before we name somebody to open ourselves to a lawsuit. But I fully understand what they're going through. I have something like that lately. Somebody bought nearby us, and we have the same problem they're having, just this, this long rental, long-term rental. Now, those short-term rentals that they are complaining about with all the reasons, which I can feel what they, what they're going through, they are supposed to be collecting from the TDC tax. The city should be aware of that. Because short-term rentals are subject to quarterly filing taxes like any other business, and they have to pay to the TDC tax to the county, which the long-term rentals, six months or more, they are not subject to. So it's easy for the city, first of all, to enforce the amount of people that should be on a single-family home. It's a description for that, even in the city chart. So that has to be enforced. And also, find out who really is renting, which is the entity that is renting. Because I find out that a lot of the short-term rentals here are run by some managers, and they don't have the least idea, and they are not responsive to the owners when the tenants cause problems. So first of all, let's call them short-term rentals. Because Airbnb is a big company nationwide. They have lawyers on retainer, and we don't want to get ourselves into them suing us because we're seeing it's Airbnb. And it's actually, if you don't see the contract, you don't know who's renting. That's the only thing. I think it should make it easier for the city. I, I realize that some of the people in, in this city that is claiming homestead exemption, they have a rental, okay? And they pretend. The city needs to be, like, for example, the city should ask, is this going to be a rental? The city has a rental application. The city should come up with this. It's going to be a short-term rental, or a, or a, or a short-term rental, which is daily, whatever, or a long-term. When they are short-term rentals, they need to disclose it. And maybe the city could charge a good fee for that. Okay?
Thank you for your comment. Is, are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jeremy Davis, P-section. Still have yet to meet my neighbor. Haven't figured out how to go approach them with that whole situation. I don't want to be asked to my neighbor. I shouldn't have to be. But y'all allowed this to happen. I've asked, I keep asking, when the swell backs up, or actually, in the email today, when the swell gets overwhelmed by water, you know, when it's raining, you know, during a storm, and it keeps on raining, where's that water going to go? It's going to back up into that drain. And then when that drain is backed up, where's that water going to go? It sure as hell is not going to go up that hill. There's no way. Only where it can go is to the left, and that's to me. So here I am, for the umpteenth time, explaining how water flow happens to a bunch of people that evidently have no education on how water flows. And I know they all hear me too. And evidently, they don't have an education but get paid very well for it. I shouldn't have to sit here and tell y'all how to do y'all's jobs. I shouldn't have to sit here and come up with all kinds of solutions for this simple matter that I even directed when I called here and told y'all that this was overfilled. Robert Gross came out there and looked at it and said nothing was wrong. It was according to the plan. Well, evidently, whoever wrote that plan flawed it. You've been to my place. Y'all have driven by my place. You've been to my place. I want answers, and I'm tired of being pushed around like I'm not important. I understand that y'all have tried, but y'all aren't trying hard enough. Because if I started trying and started doing something, then, then I'm going to be the bad guy. But you guys ultimately have caused this whole situation. When I knock on my neighbor's door and let them know that as soon as that water starts encroaching me, I am calling code to let them know. And I already know that y'all will blow that off, just like you did last time, and say we need to come take pictures hours after it stopped raining. I am not a dumb person, and I evidently have showed y'all that because I keep coming, because I keep telling y'all to make it make sense. But I'm still here because it hasn't made any sense. And just like the people with the park, I mean, we can, we can shed light from sea turtles, but we can't keep light from houses. I just try to make some residents happy. I mean, it's just seems like a whole bunch of shit. It's just piling up. Y'all don't make sense. And it started back when I started coming back here in August of last year. And here I still am, talking about the flooding house next to me. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
Joe Almeida, I'm in the P-section. And not to beat a dead horse, but basically, short-term rentals, because I don't have a problem with Airbnb or Verbo or any of those organizations. But I just built a house here, moved down, because I just recently retired. And I took a lot of time to research the neighborhood, make sure it was going to be a great place for my family, built the house. Now we're here full-time to go ahead and build a house, and it's 100% rental across the street. In all honesty, the rentals haven't been an issue. But I'm cleaning trash every other day in my lawn because that bin hasn't left the end of their driveway in weeks. And it's overflowing every single day. So I'm the one stuck cleaning their trash. Now, I went online, code enforcement, which by the way, doesn't work, because it wouldn't let me send a complaint in online unless you call the number. But if everybody else is saying code enforcement doesn't really enforce the code, what's the point of that? But I didn't spend that much money to build a house to have a hotel across the street. It's not really fair. And they should be treated just like every other business. Because when I first moved in, I heard all about the things I can't do. Can't put a boat in my driveway. Can't put a camper in the driveway. Can't put a sign on a car. You got all these codes you can't do, but you can build a hotel across the street and pretty much do anything you want. So I don't think it's fair. And I think the town should really look at maybe putting a group together to study it, to come up with resolutions that would be fair to everybody. I don't have a problem against the, the particular gentleman that owns the one across the street. I went online, and within a half hour, I found out he owns three of them here in Palm Coast individually. So, and he doesn't live on any of them. Is he paying the same taxes as I am? He should be paying as a business. His water bill should be a different rate than mine is. Everything should be at the commercial, not at the residential level. I don't have a problem with anybody having a business, but they should take the same steps as everybody other, other business, and then they should be responsible about it. I should be able to call and code enforcement, go ahead and do something about it. I can, I can bring it up on my camera right now. Their trash bin's still out in the street. It's been that way all weekend, when the critters got into their trash and blew it all over, cleaning up pizza boxes, Sprite boxes, you name it. I think that's just unfair. I mean, I looked forward to moving here, and now I'm, me and my wife are honestly regretting it. And that shouldn't be the case because it's a beautiful place to live, but not if that goes the way it's going.
Thank you for your comment. Other, yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Mike Slura. I live in the C-section. And on my street, there's one Airbnb, which so far, we've only had one incident with it. But it's, when you look it up on the property appraiser, it's under a LLC. So it's a limited liability corporation. And it's in a residential neighborhood. So I don't understand how that works. And single-family, I would, under the assumption that it would be one family or something. They have five or six different families coming in, staying over the weekends and stuff. And, you know, I know they have lobbyists that kind of get all these laws passed in their favor. But some of these other ones that aren't really controlled, if the city would maybe, if they got six cars and they got cars parked out in the street and they're not supposed to be, ticket them, you know? Put some pressure on them to go by the law. And, you know, down in West Palm, they had one Airbnb where they rented it, and I guess the people before them had some fentanyl. A little girl, the next renters had, came in, and the little girl was playing around, picked up the fentanyl, they put her to take a nap. She passed away. So you don't know who's coming and going. You know, some places in Palm Coast might be fine to have it, where you got an acre or something, you got a nice long driveway, and there's some space. But there's other places where it doesn't really belong. You don't want guys having bachelor parties, urinating out in front of the yard when you got your little kids playing. It's not really what we should have here. And I know we can only have a little control because the county and I think the state dictate what you can and can't do. My other issue is, I live on a canal, and these boats are going fast up and down the canal, making these huge wakes. And, you know, they're damaging our seawalls and stuff. I see people sitting on the bow of the boat with their feet hanging over and stuff, which is illegal. You know, if that person was to fall in and get hurt or something, I think maybe we should have some more presence of the sheriff. They have a marine patrol, I guess, maybe down hiding some of these canals. And when they see this happen, write some tickets, and maybe that would put, you know, somewhat of a stop or slow it down some. And maybe, you know, prevent somebody from getting hurt. And that's basically what I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public want to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. And councillor, city manager, if you would, I'd like you to draft a summary of the new legislation regarding the short-term rentals, which was completed in this last session, just distributed to city council members. So we're all up to speed on what can and can't be done at this point in time. So we can start there. And then city manager, after that's distributed, maybe it could become an agenda item for discussion as it fits in a future agenda.
Understood, Mayor.
Councillor Lynn Pontieri, any comments on public comment this evening?
Just briefly, on the short-term rental issue, this has been something that I've been constantly looking into. And I can tell you that I appreciate counsel putting something together for us. Just a note, the max that we can really do at this point as a city, unfortunately, is enforce our own code with regards to parking and noise. So I would just really encourage code enforcement to continue to stay on top of that, because that is the only way that we can really protect our residents right now. Unfortunately, we're preempted by the state and the county with regards to anything else that we can do. So really just want to encourage code enforcement to stay on top of these issues for the benefit of our residents, since our hands are tied otherwise.
Thank you. Councillor Danko, any comment?
Well, I just want to echo what Councilwoman Pontieri said. And I do want our code enforcement to step it up as much as we can, along with our sheriff's department. I know it's a very frustrating issue, and I know our hands are tied by the state. And I really sympathize with our residents and what they're going through. I lived on an island in North Carolina where 90% of the properties were rentals, and every week, I met hundreds of my new best friends every single week. So I fully understand their frustration. And we, we can, we only can do what we can do, but I'd like to see us do it to the max.
Thank you. Councillor McLeffus?
So I concur that we are basically, you know, we have our hands tied by county and state-level regulations. Now, I will say this. I serve on Now I will say this, I serve on the Tourism Development Council, and every quarterly meeting, we do receive an update from Suzanne Johnston, the county tax collector, and, excuse me, they use a software called AirDNA, which basically is a scraper, which goes out there and it searches Airbnb and VRBO for these county listings, so that Suzanne Johnston can ensure that she's receiving the necessary taxes that they are due. If any of you guys have more information, she, every ti, every time we have a quarterly meeting, she gives a whistleblower alert. If you have anything that you have information about that might not be an Airbnb, or VRBO, or some other means that these short-term rentals are being utilized, they wanna know this information. And if you can also cross-reference it with the tax collector's website, which will show you the taxes paid, none of these homes should be homestead, so they are stealing from our community if they are. And Suzanne Johnston would really like to have that information in front of her. So, again, they use software called AirDNA, which allows the county to ensure that they are receiving the taxes that they're supposed to be, but if you can be vigilant as much as possible, while our hands are, you know, pseudo-tied up here, that would be at least a start. And I know that every, every quarterly meeting, we do have an update that there were reports from anonymous individuals on the tax collector's website that allow action to occur. So I know it's frustrating, but that is one means, if you do have people who are very much breaking the system and impacting our community, please do so.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor?
Yes, I'd like to just mention that I am very sympathetic also with the residents that are experiencing these issues with the Airbnbs in the community. I do urge you however, to make sure that you contact code enforcement. I know that they want you to give your name and your information, but sometimes we have to do that. I've had to do it myself, so I would encourage you that if you have to take that measure to do so.
Uh, the tax collector's website could be anonymous, though, there's the little...
Very good. City manager, do you have any comment on, you'll help us follow through with this issue, because this issue is, is, continues to persist, and we'll get updated by memo, and then we'll have the discussion further, okay?
Yes, and we'll work with code enforcement staff on enforcement, as well as the sheriff's office.
All the other parts, thank you.
Interesting side note, that website is flaglertax.com backslash anonymous, if you guys want to submit any tips that you have here tonight. So thank you again.
Very good. Okay. All right, thank you all. Um, the next item on our agenda, now I'll get it right, is Agenda G, Resolutions, and councillor, I'm gonna ask you to read it in again.
Resolution two-zero-two-four dash XX, approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Palm Coast and the Flagler County School District.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Evening.
Good evening.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and City Council. James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. With me tonight, I have Mr. Joshua Walker, he is the Human Resource and Benefits Supervisor for the school district, and then Mr. Dave Freeman, who is our, who is their Chief of Operational Services. Um, so today we're going to discuss the sub-agreement for the Indian Trails Middle School slash Sport Complex. So just a little bit of background, um, in July, we came to you with a master's agreement that included multiple facilities, including Indian Trails, uh, also Belter, Buddy Taylor, Rimfire Elementary, and I think that was about it. Uh, so, and then each site was gonna have their own sub-agreement, and this is what we're bringing to you tonight. Um, just for your reference, if you look at the screen here, um, fields fi, uh, three, four, uh, sorry, three, four, and five, um, uh, here on the school property, and then we look at fields six, seven, and eight, um, this, and this is behind the middle school. So here is the middle school in the bottom right corner, and then on, here is, the school is kinda up here in the top right, uh, with, there's a restroom facility here, is number two, um, and then across the pond is, there's a pedestrian bridge, and then that signals Indian Trails Sport Complex with two fields and the baseball complexes. Um, so tonight's, um, uh, not really a presentation, but tonight we're just looking for an approval to this resolution, to approve this sub-agreement with the Indian Trails and the school district. Um, so that's all we have for you tonight.
So, can you be more specific? Um, you're asking for approval for what?
Uh, approval to approve this MOU agreement, uh, that is presented to you.
So I would ask city council members, you've all had a chance in your package to look at the language in the memo of understanding document, are there any questions from city council at this time?
No, I have none, and I appreciate James, Joshua, and Mr. Freeman working collaboratively to be able to get this done.
I have no questions.
I have none either. Uh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Pontieri, any comment or question?
No questions. I, I discussed some of my questions with staff and have been satisfied with the responses, so thank you.
Good, and I would also comment that I truly appreciate the collaborative effort between the school and the city, always. So it is the way to get to yes, I believe would be the correct way to say that today. So I would ask for a motion, um...
Sure, so moved.
Do you wanna state that, Zoe?
Sure, absolutely, I move for approval, uh, for the resolution.
And I will say...
Sorry, Vice Mayor, of, uh, move for a motion approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Palm Coast and the Flagler County School District.
Thank you, councillors. I have a motion from councillor McLeufus, and a second from councillor Danko. Before we vote, I will open this up to the public, if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion from city council at this time? Hearing none, I would ask, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
There you go, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, under G, would be four, and councillor, if you would go ahead and put that on the record for us.
Yes. Resolution two-zero-two-four dash XX, approving a contract with M.A.S.C.I. Construction Incorporated, a work order for construction, engineering, and inspection services, and a project contingency for the arterial resurfacing project.
Yes, uh, good evening, Carl Cody, Director of Stonewater Engineering Department. Uh, yes, I'll just repeat what was just stated, we advertised a contract to resurface the arterial roadways. It is gonna entail all of Pine Lakes Parkway, all of Rimfire Drive, and Rural Palms Parkway from Belter to Town Center. Um, it also includes a work order for construction, engineering, and inspection services, and then a project contingency. I received three bids on the project, um, and the low bidder was Massey for, for the construction.
Love that roadwork. Just for the public's benefit, could you just define briefly what an arterial roadway means in your world?
Basically, arterial roadway is a roadway that doesn't have residential driveways on it.
Okay, thank you for that, Carl. Um, questions from city council members?
I have none.
No questions.
And, uh, online, councillor Pontieri, any comment at this time?
No, mayor, thank you.
And councillor Danko?
I have nothing.
Very good. Um, again, this is a, another step forward in playing catch-up with the roads, so glad to see that we're moving forward. I would ask for a motion at this time?
I will move for approval.
Okay, good enough. Um, and may I have a second?
I have a second.
And councillor woman, Hyder has seconded, any further comment from city council? Then I would open the item up for the public, uh, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, and I would go ahead and ask, all in favor of the motion which has been seconded, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to Agenda Letter H, which is our consent agenda, so let me start with, um, council members online, uh, any item in the consent agenda that you would like to discuss?
I have, I have none.
Okay. Councillor Wynn Pontieri?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone on the dais here?
None.
None.
Very good, then I would open up the consent agenda to the public, if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda this evening, please come forward. Uh, seeing no one come forward, I'll close, and I would ask for a motion.
I'll move to...
I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councillor Danko has made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
And councillor woman Hyder has seconded, um, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next we'll have, um, discussion by city council members that were not a part of the C, uh, hold on a second, nope, that's not gonna work. I will open up our final public participation this evening, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on any item that was not previously covered in tonight's agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and now I will go to city council members for any item that you might want to discuss that was not on the agenda this evening. Anyone on the dais?
I have none.
I'd just like to congratulate Island Flavors, uh, they're a Caribbean restaurant that opened up one, a new business here in Palm Coast. They had a wonderful, wonderful turnout on this past Saturday, we did the ribbon cutting, and we'd like to congratulate them, and if you want some good island food, please take a visit to Island Flavors.
Beside her, where is it?
City Market Place.
City Market Place, very good, thank you for that. Councillwoman Pontieri, um, final comments for this evening?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, there is a very cool event happening at our community center on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, it's the Children's Business Fair. Uh, they had their first one last year out at the Malacombra Community Center, and, um, this year it's gonna be right here in Palm Coast. Um, it's, it's so awesome, um, basically, you know, we've got children in our community that come and set up booths and market and sell their products, um, and, uh, judges go around and judge the products and give out awards, and they actually are selling their products to the public. They have business cards, they have business plans, it's just a super cool event, um, that I don't think very many people know about. They are still accepting kid entrepreneurs to be involved in it, and they're also looking for sponsors to help fund it, because it is a nonprofit event. Um, so just wanted to kinda give them a shout-out and a little promo, and really encourage people to look it up. Um, it's childrensbusinessfair.org backslash Palm Coast, if you wanna check it out, and, um, I also think that they're on Facebook as well, so really encourage our community to, um, get involved with that awesome event if they're interested. Other than that, no, I hope everybody has a wonderful week.
Thank you. Councillor Danko, any final comments this evening?
I, I wanna echo what councillor woman Hyder said, and had I been in town Saturday, I would've been there too. I can't wait to go out there. Um, other than that, I have nothing else, except I wanna give a shout-out to our acting city manager, Lauren, uh, thank you for taking care of Santa Claus, and you know what I'm talking about, that's all I have.
Very transparent, thank you, councillor Danko. Let me make the, my final comment this evening, I had the privilege and honor of attending the ADA, um, deployment at our local National Guard readiness center, where more than two-hundred of our finest and best are being deployed to Washington DC. I don't envy them, the challenge of keeping safety and security in the face of an election period, but I was there to witness what that is and what that means to over two-hundred families. It's quite inspiring to see how willing these folks are to serve and to keep us all safe so that we sleep well at night. So I would ask each of you to have a thought and keep them out of harm's way. With that, I would ask councillor, any final comments tonight?
None for me, mayor.
City manager?
No.
None, I will make a motion, uh, well, you've gotta go ask the attorney, uh, ask our city manager, and then I'll make the motion to adjourn.
No comments, mayor.
Councillor Danko, the privilege is yours.
To adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.